Oi! We are not only in the same family, we are a family. And I give you the good memory of our family. If you ask me, it's the same of us. And you may not remember, but... Oi! And we shall go back to the beginning. We are here today. We are here today. And this is what I am here for. We are here today. And we are going to come out of it again. Oi! I don't know this, I don't know this. Thank you very much. You know? I glad you were there today. This is a history for me. We are all human beings.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
This is a big history. Why so because? This is the first step. Someone from our A B C transition. Transition. As a flag bearer for 2023 elections. For the A B C. And secondly. Under the highest political position for the A B C. Samura Kamara as leader of the all people. How long ago? Because this is a big transition for me as Samura Kamara. Samura Kamara who was once known as a professional. Today. By courtesy of Andres de Roma. They don't turn them to Samura Kamara politician. My own type of politics is different. I don't politics. And they blame her. They honor for a leader of the A B C. If you allow me. I'll learn about the technocracy. I don't know any history in the game of politics. It's a politician and a top man. So therefore. My transition is. From Samura Kamara technocrat. To Samura Kamara the techno politician. And therefore, when he becomes president. Of the Republic of Australia. It becomes Samura Kamara techno president of the Republic of Australia. I want to tell you thanks. For sparing time, your energies. Now let's follow your mind. Just for kind. Grace this occasion. It's not easy. So my father, when I fly all the way. I don't listen to him in New York recently, notice so? Now I don't know no far and wide. I wish I had the opportunity. Of the one motor car. Which I can buy for me. As a beginning of my asshole. I would tell California. I would, I can go tell USA, maybe, design class. I can ride, I go east, that must be it. You know, for anything I travel, that was kind of a joke. Because, Lee, now creating energy. Mercy. I have given energy, not respect you. So I want to tell you that thanks for all of that. It not easy. It not easy. On this occasion. Today. So my father. Would not stop me. Because someone just said to me no more. He said. I don't stop you now, I don't stop you now, today not stop you now for the first time. All of that. Yes, so I saw them, it's disappear. It's now okay, sir. It's disappear, yeah, it's. It's not here now. I'm hungry. But. Today, the opportunity. Where I can let the world show this. I don't. I just maintain your time. For generations for you. We are the sons and the children of you. Because, ready, back to the future. We are the people of China. We are the people of China. I don't know what you mean by that. I'm sorry, I don't say it, you know. I, ah. What I don't say. For which the perfect dress. Are they listening to me? Because we are all for which the perfect dress.
They say, they are the lucky.
You don't talk, okay, now they didn't do so. But come here, talk about. Lucky brother. But. Once we honor the past. That is also challenges the future. And this is. The dreams and aspirations of our children. Yet to learn those who are born. Because you know. One of our one dream very clear. All of us sitting here. Have enjoyed part of Australia. Nobody will claim saying, no good in that pastor in Australia. But at the same time. We are all endure the difficulties and challenges in Australia, notice so? Like this, I know one for letting people there, who be there, no. Notice so? And this is why. Today. This discussion I want to generate. Therefore. With the journey. What lies in front of us? As we approach June 24, 2023. What is like before we, as Australians? What is like before we, as ABCs? On the way. For the election. Who they look forward to? All of us, we're very enthusiastic, notice so? ABC are two to say. June 24, 2023. Chapter 12, ABC, oh, we. I'm not coming there, I'm special. Not something to say. That's our expectation. That's our expectation. Now, in the moment of ABC. Even, answer. They will say. June 24, 2023. Do you have a background? You will be there. We are sorry for Australia. We are sorry for you. Look, say to me. Who wants to be, who are they that way, they see. They are where they got life. They are where there is longer for who false promises. Where they want a broken vows. Plenty, plenty. Because this one. The best thing that can happen to any mortal man. When if you die, say, in the rest, in what you rest. And when you live in truth. When you live in truth. If you like to know, I'm saying. It's one of them, it means of our citizens. Come back, say, I tell you, because I am good at doing. When people are not correct you. Listen to them. Listen to them. Because. These are the people. Who put you in, they don't put you for god's damn wow. No, they put you, ah. For some ambition, but they want they have to achieve. And that is. Where the people. They still come true. As it don't come true, where I am. You buy the battery, you go eat. Not for some true mercy, eh? This is why. When I'm in the top of the sun. I say the average. To June 24, 2023. It not easy. That's who is who. You know, if anybody tell you say. For win the election. At begin business, they lie. Not to begin business. If anybody tell you say. For provide positions for the world. Now, here's the thing, they lie for you. You don't know the difficulties and the challenges of opposition until you are sit there. And when you are sit there. Your first point for you. And for, oh, who is? ABC. Your first thing coming for you is for kind. You really see. They come. To everybody. They give stuff like that, says. Generally, they say. First, you know, I think in the country, it's around, and it's. In your mother's, kind of person. And when you. Yes, and my name is man. And what is possible, guys, we are going to. What you are doing, you as a leader, you are promoting violence. You are promoting violence. And when you promote violence, the people that will react violently. So this, my background. This background, social and political context. It not easy. Who doesn't ever talk about politics? Who doesn't ever talk about economics? Who talk about where to live? Even culture and societies, they will never talk about it. But they still get enrolled in society. Notice so? Nothing will happen at all. Who not get a plus and a minus. But what you want is. Let the process overshadow the minuses. You get the next benefit effect. And let nobody not give up in life. Because. In life. You have to struggle. People that they tell you something happened to me now, every day they rap. I go to court, every day they rap, I go in there. Your cell is fire. Nobody came. I said, no, I go, the law, not the law. That face the law. And they go. Anything. Where you not go for. You don't have a shit, ah. Notice so see? What did the guy would tell me say? In the sweat of that fair child, have its brain. Notice what he say? And. One famous pastor, who they can. Eh, eh, now on ABC. And eh, eh. And they put you there, eh? What is it? They have a routine. And see. We are 1997, when we were in the South, we were. He said, that help you, that's that. He said. What God cannot do. He said, what God cannot do? Trust. It is. So let me put a man, not going past what is speed. In life. To the man say. By the man, yeah. If already for sacrifice. If already for suffer pain. And what if more rewarding in life? When you suffer pain for the coffee. Not when you suffer pain for yourself, self, self. Notice so be? You be come with the pain, you help back. I mean, when you and the people are, they call humanitarian and useless. What's with the G? But when you do. God not, God with the G. God not, God with the reward. When you bad, it's anything for the one you in bad, letting you flex. When you good, then what do you do? In my life. As a politician today. In the most suicide times now. I want to, I want to tell you, Bahamian, Jagavan Kamara, thank you. Thank you. And the second thing because. Notice say, other people, they not helpful. But they know how to help them. But they know who. They plenty. Someone be sister and a brother. But I knew after that, one day. From her dad. One day I was there. Big love now, Jesus, you, you now, mother, see. Oh, man, you are meet up. No, no meet up. So I said, if we are there, if we are there today and go right. When we go north, it goes south. Why go east, you go west. But say. In my own best time. We are more great. For more than this. He has been very helpful to my campaign. We are two now, I want to tell you thanks. And also all the women of mine, all the heads of Samura Kamara movement. Thank you. Some not to money. Some are ideas. But that's still alive. Now I hear, notice so be? And that's why I am here today. I want, now I hear. But as soon as they gave these ideas, or they think about being in that to me. Back in like a small narrative of the journey. I said, this song. Will defend difficult circumstances, though they go. June 24, 2023. I don't plan to confront anybody. I am not a confrontational politician. I am not a violent politician.
Say it again.
No. I'm not. And. Notice say, what a big politician, in a manner from heaven to give her. Not so manner from heaven. Let us all work together. When you work together, you enjoy the benefit and results of the neighbors. And they are there, begging. That was the answer for her. Now, you see Australians outside Australia. I know I'm not if you want to, because it's very, very important to me. If we succeed. For me, Australia, the only one who try. What they not try, eh? The one that will be. Would have achieved. Would have been for achieving. Who makes Australia as a whole. Where upon man they can learn lesson from. But we are. Yes. Australia is also blessed with diversity. We have assisted tribes, notice be? Let's use them to be. Strangeness. The strangeness we want. That is training in diversity. Because once you forget, eh? You turn the diversity into united instrument. United institution. You have achieved a life. I make that with someone like this, so. I don't know whether you know what I mean, talk some, we talk about inside. Nah?
In order to.
In order to. Yeah.
We are all American.
We are American.
United States of America.
Yes. What he say, we are all American. We are all Australia. Notice so be? I want to let this person resonate to our people back home. If it comes from you. Who are they generate interest, then listen to them. What I can want, I'm not, they were this. Because someone is reality. They can have 100 dollars, who is there for no second, eh?
I feel be.
Your role is critical in pushing Australia forward in the United Australia. And in bring forth development and unity, a coherent society. Let nobody but say you lie. When I know you are not passive. You are not passive observer, or passive actor. You must remain very united, proactive. In moving Australia forward.
Sounds good, sounds good.
There are so many entry points. Someone they enter through politics. Someone they enter through business. Someone they enter through humanitarian activities. Plenty, plenty, eh? What's wrong now? We are only below 8 million. Mexico's sitting at 55 million. China, 1.8 billion, so. Now I discipline. He like to fuck people, who say the leader, they say. Drive this thing, or by here, 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 they really clean. Why is it that a small country like Australia? Will destroy? This is why sometimes I sit down and say. When they say small is beautiful, I say, no, I say small is challenging. Small, it's more challenging in a life. I need a complete example. But let me take you through. My vision of Australia, this is our vision, all of us. Today, it was a positive vision, it was a good idea, now all run in that. It's not easy. What did happen as I learned today? Therefore, draw back to the past, some of it. If you must follow this. When I talk as I look, say. In my manifesto, in my vision. I want to take him on his mind back to 1961. Aminah.
Tell them that, wow.
Aminah. Notice free ride, oh. Because what they do, they say, I don't play, will go to 1961. No, not so free ride. It's about reflecting the good, the bad, the ugly. 61 years on, since in the present. Where are we? Are we proud of where we are today?
Oh!
Singapore, what started? Every day China, what are they, Singapore? Malaysia. Thailand. South Korea. We call them today. Fast economy, notice so? Thailand, the economy. Who say by that, for the economy. Who not get tired, I go, who's ending? Who say anybody, who is that, who is why? No, yeah, they lie on the economy.
Lie on the economy.
We should have made serious tries. To push Australia into the map. Because we have all what it takes, we have all the resources, not you know eh? What ones who not get is Australia. The people are the best people. The people are the most hospitable. People, they have so much hospitality. Now, see, I don't know. Let's start with everything about who is Australia. Where friends, you know? Best is Australia, telling you about hospitality and friendliness. Anybody of hospitality and community. Why? They the right that. But today, we go see Australia. And what is the stance? That's all motivation. Wester attention, such attention, economic attention, all kind of technology together. I even see. Where you belong, you see? Even if I have the attention, we be great. Who say 90s? It don't know. Let's try and put all of this. We can do it. But we have to be resident. Therefore, make up a mindset. 1961. To 1980. What is the number I don't believe in? The number one, who does could be there, who the number one, after, they use the number one, eh? They don't want you, Patrick. But I mean, the number one, you. Those years were very positive years for us. The 60s and the 70s. Notice so? They can watch it, eh? Only in there. Why they say human? Today, when they say human, don't argue with us. Why, this is because. Then they they, the population in Africa, in Northwest, they are now 300,000. You don't see be? So human was scared for that, was shocked for that. Today, around 90,000, say, now 600,000. You are so not close to 2 million people left. How human will you act, oh, eh? Notice eh? He is like he knows that streets. He go visit. He pass in most countries, he go there. See, man, in the 30s, they are gonna. They are, they are. In the 30s, when they pass in, they are gonna. In the 30s. What else, oh, oh, in the 30s. Nobody know what is into the stigmatizer. Notice so be? Everybody was smiling. Was so friendly. And he come on, knowing that. When you wait for a lady. To Australia, I say. The government of the state. Eh, you can't allow. Reserve humanity. There was that last year, eh? Who can go to 1980s? Which have 1980s? As. Who bring iron for one of us. They can't help people to go social assistance program. But eh, they don't be say. One size fits all. That man, the problem, the social assistance program. The problem, eh? Now Kenya, if you say like the same solution as Australia, the same one in Nigeria. Let's not admit. There are some problems. Who not be grow, the cow, the wolf grow. And that is the beginning of our currency problem. Sometimes, who are we, like this, they forget, we are a currency, eh? Who not pay it, eh? Not pay it, for they get manage a currency. Not so begin business. It's a huge responsibility. But. Without currency, we divide you. They say overbuying. When the currency overbuy, what's gonna happen? You export, you get better money. You must achieve that. But when they say divide you. The structure of that of currency is down, 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 down. So we hope that, when you export, you get more goods. For when one for import, you just can't more goods. We need to afford so. So sometimes, I follow me say. It didn't matter at the time. But to get the money where, we have to follow. That was easy. Let's not say when our artists, you know? Our present, you have a seal, eh? What you do? They bring water. Nigerian, eh? Out of blow, where? Nobody ever, you say, we get civil, civil conflict. Let the world notice that. Who are, whose resident? Or whose man, you tell and say, India, 1960. It's like you say, this 1960, or back 1991, what would they like, Australia? That progress will not be ever again. But that's what. It has progressed, it has been years. Eight thousand, eight thousand, a hundred. Unnecessary work. When I go back to 1994. I'm just a doctor for the government. I go in the finance, or woman, you can't wait for that, oh, eh? This is a way that she do, I say. Who is that? Where are you waiting, eh? You are white, it's red, white, it's red, that's a blue. Because you look not, nasty, honestly. You look insane, honestly, you look sad, you look white. Because, let's not be, you must see signs. You have a bad, you must see signs. I can't, who's rulers? I can't have a Nazi. Smoke. Without fire, not you. Not like, no smoke without fire. Oh, who can see smoke? Brr, lepafet. Keep him himself, see, fat, I can say, Chris Mallett. For centuries. Different stages of the war. When the free state run under 1996, we get small elections. By 1997, we made. But, walk on that. Walk on that, eh? We are at thousands and thousands of refugees. Thousands and thousands, they open the, I don't see them, they go to Africa. Some people would say they not come back. Like the overall, the number, we go say diamond, after, no? Where the number, the diamond, they ain't, eh? Now, that's our name, no? So we suffer. The company was down, everything they broke, they need ground, bro. They employ the road. For what would not be necessary at all. Max, who managed, wrote that P O D. Who survived our 1960s. But that was a long. 2020 happened to me. Now, we get a peace. From nothing, eh? Say today, we never want to the world post conflict reconstruction. But so they put the war behind me. We say, how will we fight? We will survive, we will recover from the war. Eh, now the most, if you come join me down, eh? When this war puts me back. I wish you could let them shout, eh? If that, the way it's like, when you deny this war, we say the day today, let what's on the earth. Let nobody, other people, fall again as Australia. Nobody. Nobody. So again, we value, we value selection, this election, they are not available, now danger for you. And nobody other people look back. We are great. They not good. So now, we get different faces. Two thousand and two to two thousand and seven, and back again, it's a little so. Not so waste thirty, you know? No? You know it. Because this is an example of big institutions. National Health Authority, NACISTA, Aspero, some time. But most important institution, look at the wrongness, and decentralization. After thirty years, we will suffer, we will come back. But who have institutions today? All the people do now, are come bring them, independent, strengthen them, quality of staff, leadership, they don't provide, also, they not see, they not do. And this is, no, this is for, this is for, I have one of that. What is it? By this is, we get a lot of power. I don't have to do it. The essence of the, the time of the free, by, by corruption business. So these are the institutions, and the time of the draft of being governor, and so draft of being, it was called state building. But there were some states during the war, state classes. So that for the Obama, they did their self-backs in Australia, and states once more again, who achieved that. After that, and this will run back. Like, yes, I don't, I mean institutions there. But they look bad. Soon they bad, or soon soon they bad. What's that, what you see, what you happen? We go into support, hard, and it's not a hardware development. Buildings, education infrastructure was improved, health infrastructure, outside, we go to Australia, our country, work, you know what I'm saying, you say? Any side you come, work, work here, you only work here. That was, and they still there today, the schools, the universities are there, we see everything. Like God say, we not wait back, we not go fast, 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 soon. Now you be in second five year of understanding by your own way. What is it? To be, be what I am. Out of blow, where we hear a bola. And what did the bola do? He bring me down, 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 and I fronted one deep story in our growth. For they go down to Europe, not possible, because if they come in the wrong road, people will not forget jobs anymore. But I mean, jobs, they make people, they make it, but on the road. So again, we, um, we need to add the ones this, the ones that, the ones that already shown us, so sliced it. When they do, the movement of economic enhancement from two thousand and eight to two thousand and twenty-two. We not decide, go up and up, we not see, we not decide to join for ourselves. Why we are, in two thousand and eighteen in particular, why we have talked in two thousand and seventeen? We let the economy sound. In finish, I go round, you say, we are in austerity. Osterity, we say, now you feel the economy. All it means is that, time of all people are wanting to decide the thing back. Not spend more and watching, you get. So I go part here, I go here, I go here. So it's not to get chance now for, but it's a mistake. But it's something, but if you tell you qualities, you describe it in a negative way, then you don't panic. What we are now is man who is very, you know? Inflation, like highest ever in country, close to forty percent. The currency in a three, four, billion. Here, when there is no currency, we may not come out, it about to pass in the year. If you are a bank, you don't get that. Their children does a for home, and you don't know, fifty percent. So then, yes, I go wait, they say, now two thousand and two hundred grand. Yes. You see two million for four hundred dollars now, two million two hundred? From six hundred. You see the problem? And then, few advice. Hey. You go make, you get motor cars, and you go back. You go water, but we water, but then we go go down, we go go to food. Because I've seen, you know, I know big confrontation now. And at the time, I get true, we not know Australia. Or I didn't have that in business. The most difficult thing for me for a brand. Now, where, as a leader, you don't have the time to come back to your people and say, I am sorry for what has happened to me. No. So today, if I go miss this man, I say, why, see this for the currency, and this is a pity for you, who's the idea? If I go meet that man, it's right. Well, I must say, baby, baby, he got for it, he had it. I say, but there's something that we for it, she let it three full up. What I have to do for you, it must say, what you found? Because my business family, they want profits. What is lacking is a conversation. A conversation between leadership and the people. There's no communication, there's a total disconnect. Between the people and the government, and between what I say and what's on the ground. And they can say, not paper achievement. Not paper achievement. Because it's not a legitimate issue. And for nobody, we show the long project from start to finish. Like how, on a this moment, we started from Kenya to Thailand. From Macete to Kano. Eh, from Wataro, Mashaka, onto the border in Canada. Kalalau, forget about that, go to the town she. Then presumably, that is how she do so. We have each other in Islam, we for. If we only sit down to reflect, and have a conviction that we can do it, and I know we can do it, all required forces, let the goodness to yourself.
So true.
And take the good back to home, and walk over. Let twenty, twenty-three election, not any, like I say, oh, why not follow up? No. Me they say, then they say, talk and do. Yeah, I say, no, do and I do, and you talk. Because let your words speak for you. That's what people they teach me. Now you go talk for you. If I went, they want to teach her, we not want to teach her. Someday, they can meet you there. Hey, if I can say, now you will teach you. Or you not have, you not system. When you see, now you have a view, yeah, the head goes big, not so so, the head goes big. I come out, you all know the one, friend has so, like a brother, I don't know if they are, I see for that, I meet you. They are, wow. This man, sorry, this man will eat dust, we all do together. But he promotes, we promote, if I, but God is having people then together. This is what politics should be doing. Politics bring all sorts of people together as one, within the same air. That's your only reason. And the same oxygen, why are we different? Why are we different to one another? What place of course we leave us there? The diaspora. The APC is in transition, just as the country is in transition. Because one for good, for us, for this, for, not like us, for this, as a country, not so. The NBC is a, we in transition. First person. When NBC, they share posts, they say, Taboos, love our India. Then the party, they show their India. They not be mad, because it's a culture who inherit Taboos. Where the chief, they not stood on, retire our authorities then, they not beside, we don't know you somewhere for go, for who, be to answer. In a lucky hour, they go meet, everything. Taboos. While the party, they say, oh, democracy is not in the, it's not very democratic. Alright, we don't get democracy, election now. Election, we election me. This truth, it is the truth, you must have a winner. Not so, you must get a winner. You want somebody, when I tell you I'm going to win. But I don't only say the two are enemies. We not think to enemies, not so. So therefore, when you win, you win, when you lose, you win. Is that APC, you either win or you win. Then I NBC, or NBC, like Cobra Party. NBC, they let nobody be here. We not let nobody here, and at the time, if anybody there, who if you say, NBC, you don't have a feeling. And the promise for now, NBC, you know, that Samura Kamara as leader, who will try, will do that. All man forget to share. All man forget to share, everybody forget to share, who will try. And in sharing, I don't put on a pocket, I give, I must pay the environment for you. Why you can more than make that easy for yourself? That's what leadership is all about. Leadership, when they listen, leadership, when they endure, leadership, when they humble, leadership, when they encourage the people there, leadership, when they accept mistakes, and they have a correct, that's the leadership we want to try. Now, nobody not get me, nobody your family, nobody, nobody. So many go ask you, Samura Kamara, why you want to be president? Yeah, no man say, you know, go, I know the answer, laugh at, talk to you, fam. Let anybody, if I can, see now, I can enjoy, I talk soon. The man say, today, give me not out of blow. He say, he say this time now, this time now, they go give me upper hand. For not that, in our own story. I want you in our own story. From years back, when the story that it been. Bonk, I just speak, we are, we are in the day, I hate the French. Bonk, I just speak, Vassos, friend, Bruno, in the, not so. Bonk, I just speak, an English boxer, he was a very boxer, the PBA. Bonk, I just speak, the BBC, they were like, to unite, the PBA, the BBC, those they say, I go, I should, I got, I go first, Bruno, my head. He go, primarch, I didn't give her, we not then, go there, the communications. That primarch, he says, and go put up my inside. So when they see that, like you say, who, now in the show, like, who do they show so now? They, we not okay, correct. What do they show so now, this one? They show Bruno, how anyone can, then boom, the car, eh, he can, boom, upper hand, knock out. He too strong, knock out, take twenty-five knock out. Bonk, I just speak, this is up, and you watch. You know, if they drink, make it, drink in can, you have a German, they can, they drink in can. So when they show all these trips, I didn't need you, Madrid, Oscar. Mr. Smith, how do you see this man? He's a strong man, he can fight. I said, I do not doubt that. They can throw, brutes. He's a good fighter. They want to ask you one question, and ask you, can he himself take those doors? Yes. When he come on the top, upper hand, you should say, the world, you open, that same way say, that same way of the world, I didn't take it. The man is a, he's a man, this man, let's see, the battle we tell. Brothers and sisters, now notice, I mean, Bruno was knocked out from the A P R. So, now, I because they, well, you see, let's have the tale of that. Now, in this, in twenty eighteen, when they debate, I say, you know, the man they can now, we talk, I will do this in two months, I'll do this in six months, I'll do it in one month. I say, hey, I for the country, not so big, you business, so, not so big, you. Wait until you are there, and you can see how the challenges evolve, I am happy to do so today. They say, they will turn the economy in six months. Take the, the economy was around where, say, the price is so open for mine. This amount, seven thousand, two hundred, over ten thousand. Building materials, rest, when I disturb food. Bring a motor, I use. Tampa lava, I didn't say, they didn't say, for bitter lava from you, you open the factory, take the, the factory, not for it. Yes, I be, against the three fracture projects, I want you to listen to this very carefully. Me, I'm not confrontational. When you do good, I expect you do, I appreciate that. You say, we become free quality education. It's a loaded, a loaded ambition, free quality education. So we not go to Australia, we not go to Europe. The cost of education, astronomical. And how much schools, and they want to come and govern it, so they want more private schools. So if you have an equation for improved revenue for education, you not bring the private sector schools. That was the ratio, you don't need. Bring now, this time, we consider it, what percent, five percent, of schools. Even this, you program, I say, you can feel it. That now, after all, I know I didn't go to the primary school, so all the school, I have made a share break. And I say, this very, very honestly, I don't do, I don't charge the endowment of Australia. I don't have any for this proof there, but I really have responsibility, if I'm coming, help us, a country, for understand the country, first. This is what it's about. So education is good, the initiative is good, or intention, for you have a intention, consequences, who not even manage. I don't mean say, oh, come, we just throw a hammer, no, we not answer, this body have grown to us. Only project, or APC do, oh, they throw their all, they say, our political project, say. But by the grace of God, we come and finish ours, and also finish their ass. They say, let's not go in the British, I know you. Well, we not see the British, quality happy. They stop my, they are all project, they're going an extension, I know you, oh, has problem, you saw? This is a big problem.